Shape. As a matter of fact, we had our first day with our teachers. Welcome back Newport teachers and staff. It's nice to see friendly faces. I've seen you during the summer, but I see you there as Ms. Birdy and others are on the call tonight. So I'll begin. So coming back, I'm phasing back in for Newport. What will that look like? And what will, that's going to look like a very gentle cautious phase in for all our schools. Each of our schools is kind of systematically bringing grade levels at different times, and we'll be posting a calendar during the first two to three weeks. And within three weeks, our goal is to make sure all those that want in-person learning, we have everyone in at the same time. Pell, for instance, and this is a very rough draft. We're finalizing it right now because we have had some data change within the past week as far as those actually opting in for in-person learning. Presently at our schools, we have 25% of our students at Pell are in distance learning, 30% of our students at Thompson Middle School, and 22% of our Rogers School students are in full distance learning. So we've, we're having more children come back, which is great. We'd like as many children back as possible. In our special needs category, we have about 22% of that category in distance learning. So as I started to say, what, what is it and how will distance learn? How will the re-entry phase, the phase in, look for Newport? And presently, as we're starting to do this in Newport, and I will be toggling back and forth between documents, so I have the latest information. For Newport, that means, for instance, at Pell Elementary School, we're going to continue our same soft, we call it soft start. And for kindergarten and PK, we have that every year. Parents, families are notified, very small groups of children come in. The parents meet with the teachers, and the teachers also meet with the students, and we assess where students are and their learning to make sure that we have balanced classes when we go back into the full instructional setting. So that will continue as usual. I want to also remind everyone, as I'm starting to speak to you, that tomorrow evening, all your schools will be having informational sessions for you. They are posted on our website. And Ms. Nash or one of the administrators, which I know you're on, if you want to post the times in there, that would be great for the people on tonight's call. So Pell is thinking for a nice cautious re-entry phasing in. Grade one and three will come into Pell on Monday, September 14th, and on Tuesday, September 14th, sorry, September 15th, they will come into person to Pell along with our kindergarten and PK soft start. Grades two and four will start on Wednesday, and teachers will report to the building then. Grade one and three will sign on for distance learning or Google Sites, working with their teachers during that, when, during that Wednesday and Thursday. But that is just the preliminary. I want to be very clear with everyone that we're just starting to roll this out, and we will have more details for you, we're hoping no later than Friday of this week with a calendar. We just have a few things we need to map out a little bit more. For Thompson, and that is the school that's had the most, I'll say, changes in their data. Grades five and six, originally, we had them coming in, just like the elementaries, PK through four. And right now, their numbers have increased, and we're trying to work out that schedule to make sure we can bring your children back safely in the classrooms. And what does that mean in the classrooms? That means that we have desks six feet apart. Children will be wearing masks and will be social distancing at all times. And I'll go into a little bit more about that shortly. At Rogers, we're going to start with the ninth grade right now, tentatively. Ninth grade will come in alphabetically A through M, and N through Z will be in distance learning. That will continue, and then we'll switch off with N through Z going into the building, and A through M in distance learning. But again, more details will be ready for you by tomorrow. I'm sure when you speak with your building principals, they'll have the details there for you. I also want to talk to you not only about how we will re-enter and phase it in so that we're cautious and we're keeping safety at the forefront for our teachers and our students. That school's going to be very, very different this year. And I know I'm going to go to the parent questions. I will be answering those momentarily. But I just want to share with you the most important thing we're going to need from you as families is to help encourage your children to start practicing masks. The latest guidance that just recently came out within the past couple of days is requiring all children to wear masks at all grade levels. And even when they're outside at recess, they're requiring us to ask all children to wear masks as well. So we will have some links up on our website if you haven't seen them. And you can take a look at the latest information at all times. Our summer communications have been updated every week, so we encourage you to do that as well. Parent questions, I'm going to go to those right now. And these are the ones that were sent in before tonight's meeting started. And it's just give me a moment. I'm going to go to my box. I'm going to look at, thank you, Director Andrade. She set it up in Google Docs for me, so I greatly appreciate that. So, so one of the first ones that, questions that we had is, how is classroom better for children? It's mental health and distance learning. I can share with you that the articles I've been reading, the importance of socialization, the importance of just seeing their peers, that is what has been shared with us. But again, in the back-to-school RI, there's a lot of documentation that shares the importance of children being in school, not only for their mental health, but also in-person learning is more effective. It is going to be very different. The question is, when there's, how is this going to be helpful if they're stuck in a room and they can't interact with one another as they did in the past? It is going to be very different. It is going to be very challenging. And some families may have opted not to have their children in distance learning because of something of that kind of change. There will be signs posted everywhere as far as wearing your mask, social distancing, and remembering to wash your hands. We also have in hallways, which we will be posting. If you have not already seen some of the pictures of what or what classrooms look like, we will be sharing that with you. So as a parent, you can see what your child's classroom will look like. It's very different. It's more sparse. We have only a certain number of desks in the room. We have a teacher's desk in one area. We have, the floor is mapped out as far as safe areas for teachers as far as when they're teaching in front of the classroom, as well as we have hand sanitizers, wipes, extra masks, and all the PPE. So I'm going to go on to the next one. Recession, lunch, snack, free play, centers, whole group instruction. Every building is going to be very different. There will be recess. There will, at the elementary time, be lunch and snack time, just as they had before. I'm going to let Pell handle those questions about free play and centers tomorrow evening. Whole group, whole group instruction, children will be at their desks, most likely, in most cases. They'll have the workshop model. And for those, a workshop model is when you introduce the topic, you do a brief lesson on it. You allow children to then interact, work on their own, and then you bring back their, whatever work they've done. Teacher has, gives feedback, and learning continues. Drop-off and pickup times at Pell, what will that be? Principal Westman and her team have been very, very busy, and there will be a schedule that will be posted for that. I want to remind everyone, as I'm reading this one, that transportation, if your child was taking a bus, they should be signed up for that bus because the bus routes have been drafted out for us. We are now going through the lists, and we're looking at the times in which buses will be able to arrive. But I just want to remind everyone, transportation, if your child usually takes a bus, you should have, please, have signed up by now. Mask-wearing look like? I hear you. This person is concerned about their five-year-old being able to wear a mask all day in school if it's, if the child is in person. It is being required that everyone wears masks. That's why we are asking, if possible, that you start to introduce masks at home with your child. You start to practice wearing the masks. And I believe all of us understand it's going to take a little time for everyone to become accustomed to it, not only children, but adults as well. But we are all going to have to work together to make sure we're all wearing masks. Masks will have to be worn when children board the bus. They'll have to be worn anytime they're anywhere in the school building and in the classrooms. Teacher assignments. High school students will get their schedules, I imagine, in the next week if they have not already. I know for Pell and Thompson Middle School, they have been very busy as far as getting teacher assignments and just teacher hirings done. We've been interviewing the past few weeks. We're trying to finalize teacher assignments. So I'm sure within the week, you're going to have your teacher assignments. There will, the next question is, will there be a soft start for kindergarten? The answer is absolutely. And you will be receiving, as every year, Pell will send out that communication to you. Confirmation, the question is, when will I receive confirmation? My child is in distance learning. Your child, you will not receive confirmation. We have assigned your child distance learning if you signed up for it. I'm going to pause here for a moment because I seem to be getting a lot of pings from people. And, um, let's see, sorry. Okay. What is the protocol for students returning to the classroom after having traveled to a high-risk state? According to the RIDE COVID checklist, which parents will need to complete each day, traveling to a high-risk state is one of the risk factors that will require them to contact their physician. So again, we will have this information on our website, and it's also on the back-to-school RI website as well. Students at Thompson will be staying in one room for all their classes. How will advanced classes work in this situation? So you are correct, students will be staying in their classrooms, and the teachers are going to be rotating just to minimize the amount of interactions in hallways and keeping our stable pods stable. Advanced classes work in this situation. Dr. Bean and Mr. V tomorrow night will explain that specifically to the Thompson parents. If schools open virtual only, so, we're not, we're going in distance. PK would participate in distance learning at any time that we go to distance learning. Can parents schedule a time to walk through the school like students did? At this time, we are not allowing visitors into the school buildings. We did have an orientation for Thompson, and I do know there were some parents there. As far as Pell and Rogers at this time, I do believe they're going to have some creative videos and postings to share with you so you can see what the inside of the school looks like and what the children will be experiencing.
Colleen?
Yes?
It's Tracy, sorry.
Hi.
We're going to have a K orientation and a new parent orientation, and that will be in my parent letter going out.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Principal Westman. So that's from Pell. K orientation and new parent orientation. She will be holding a meeting. Thank you for that. Am I correct to understand the child is found infected in the class? The whole class will automatically go into a two-week quarantine. Everyone who has been identified as having contact with the infected individual will be required to quarantine and get a COVID test. And if you listen to the governor this afternoon, she did talk about close contact. And I will admit, after even hearing her today, it sounded a little different than what I'm reading in the guidelines as far as close contact with other children. I don't want to leap and say, I would think if you're in a classroom with other children, that you would not be quarantined. But we're going to get clarification for you because I was certain about that until I heard the interview this afternoon. But right now, our rule is, yes, the class would go into a two-week quarantine and go into distance learning as well as the teacher. Will all the other children, including Nan and the teacher, also be tested? That is going to be up to RIDO. They will do, if someone is positive, they will do the contact tracing, and they will inform based upon the information they get, we give them. And the information we give them is seating charts for classroom and bus seating. So they will, from there, take that, and they'll determine who gets tested. So the schools, will they have access to the Rapid Result Mobile COVID-19 Testing Vehicle? We have been informed that our testing site will be at C C R I. That's where our testing site is. And as a matter of fact, if you drive by, you'll see the tent is already set up. Special education services, how will that be affected by distance learning? Do Pell's new students need Chromebooks? When will new students' IEPs be updated, if only distance learning? I, whether in person or DL, IEP services will continue. IEP meetings will convene at the request of a parent or the annual renewal date. So if your child has an IEP, you do at any time have the right to request a meeting. You can do that, or you can wait until the annual renewal date. Chromebooks will, will be provided to students who do not currently have one. My recommendation is to contact the Help Desk at NPSRI.net. Or if you already know your classroom teacher or your building principal, someone will, if you want to reach out to them, they'll be able to help you. But Help Desk at NPSRI.net should be able to help you if you need a Chromebook. Okay. How should we be planning for virtual learning in terms of Chromebook pickup and supply lists? Building principals will be notifying you of the Chrome pickup dates and any supplied lists. I know I've already been over to Thompson, I've already seen something over there and at Pell as well. Pell will be setting up a Chromebook pickup, and they will attach supply lists to the parent letter that Pell will be sending out tomorrow. The curriculum for seventh grade. There has been a Thompson Middle School orientation just about returning to school. I know parents have been asking about the curriculum and some updates. I have to meet with the building principal for how to set up those meetings for those of you that would like to review the curriculum and what is taught in the classrooms. If you go on our website and you go under Curriculum, you will see that the standards we teach to, you'll see Year at a Glance, YAG, and you'll see for each content level, all the different standards that have to be covered. As a matter of fact, in my, if you also go to Summer Communications, in my most recent, I believe it was a week ago or two weeks ago, we did list all the standards, and we did list what would be covered in each grade level. There's a comment, splitting class alphabetically versus skill levels. Just as we do when we set up our classrooms, we do, unless it's for some advanced math or another AP class, which children select, and anyone can select those. We did split the classes alphabetically so that they could be balanced as far as the numbers for when we go into the AB schedule. For the third and fourth grader, at Pell, we are working on the phase-in plan for Pell, as I mentioned at the beginning of the conversation. We will have, hopefully, no later than Friday. We'll have that out for you as far as the final, the finalized plan. Tomorrow night, principals will also be speaking to their re-entry, their phasing in back to in-person learning. What procedures do you have in place to make sure students and faculty do not have symptoms before entering school? Employees and families will need to complete the self-attestation COVID screening recommended by RIDE and RIDO. Today, we had our teachers, when they returned back into the buildings, that we had all of them checked. We had to make sure they all checked. They gave a thumbs up, or they didn't come in if they did and were experiencing, experiencing symptoms. This, I believe, is going to be one of those, this is how school goes these days, and this is how we operate when you get up every morning. And as a matter of fact, we're creating a one-pager for you on how, how this year will be very different from most, and some of the rituals and routines you have at your own homes will have to change in order to meet the criteria for children coming to school. So everyone's going to have to fill out one of those COVID screening. You don't, all you have to do is send affirmation, I checked my child, there are no symptoms. This is the green light for your child to come into school. It's also what staff, I have to do, and everyone else has to do in order to go into work. If, how will you know if a parent has not used the app to report that their child doesn't have symptoms? And then how will you check for symptoms? All right. There's been a recent guidance, and again, we'll post that. There is guidance on all this. Director Andrade oversees this. But right now, that's been a big question for all of us as superintendents and building leaders. What happens? And as even the governor said, I'm sure there's going to be some mornings I may forget to do it for my child. We will be most likely contacting you. We will be setting up some type of system. But we have been advised, we do not, not let children into the building. We have them come in, we ask them, we can probably do a check if we have any concerns. But we will be reaching out to parents on that. Do we have a team in place to track those that, who do have symptoms? Those who are in quarantine? Quarantine, how long do they have to be there? Who needs tests, results, if positive, tracking quarantine? RIDO will be doing all of the contact tracing. The schools will not be doing contact tracing. Anyone sent home due to symptoms indicating a possible case of COVID will need to have a COVID test before they are able to return to the schools. We, as a school, our system are required to maintain a list of those individuals to be shared with RIDO. This is why it is very, very important. We have the most up-to-date contact information for all our, from all our families, for our children. As, but we need to make sure we have the most recent email addresses, the most recent phone numbers. We need to be able to get in touch with you if there is anything we need to share with you as far as information as soon as possible. I will say this too, that if a child or a staff member that has been in contact or near your child's classroom or anything like that, we will be sending a communication out to you to just keep you in the loop that a person has been sent out, or a child has been sent out and is being tested for COVID. The other thing we're going to do about that is we will also inform our school and our other teachers just to make them have that awareness. We will also report back to you what we learned from that. And then, as I stated earlier, if it's positive, RIDO will be contacting those people, those children's families that have been in close contact with the positive case. How is it even possible to do full in-person school if CDC guidelines are followed? I agree with the question. It's tough. It's hard. We have to main, make sure we maintain six-foot distance between desks. We have to make sure we have everyone wearing masks. We have to make sure everyone's washing their hands when appropriate and when, as often as possible. When children or people go in and out of classrooms, we will have, we have hand sanitizer, we have the disinfectant foam. For the high school, we have foam in, foam out. That is what we're doing. We're trying as best as possible with logistics and operations to do all that. What does distance learning look like? And will there be dedicated distant learning teachers? That is going to vary according to schools. For instance, at Pell Elementary School, we have had students and teachers, we are able to set up teachers that are just distance learning teachers. At the middle school, we have a hybrid approach almost to that. We will have some teachers, they're teaching their in-person students, and then they may have some people on the screen, especially for our grades seven through 12, when we do that A through M, N through Z split. For our grades five through six, as I've mentioned to all, we are looking at those numbers, and we may have to go to the A through M, N through Z. But we are working on our latest data and seeing if we can try to do as best as possible to have as many children in school every day as possible. But we're developing that plan. Will there be an orientation for students to see? So we have had the orientation for students and families, as I mentioned, at Thompson. Thank you, Dr. Bean, and Mr. V, and the team over there. Pell, as Ms. Westman, Principal Westman, just shared, we'll be having one for kindergarten students, families, and for new families to Pell. Roger, NACTAC, I believe, if they didn't already have it, they had an informational session. But I do believe they'll be posting and maybe doing a possible video for their students. I know they are, along with Rogers. And then the other, as far as students seeing, we have had grade nine students going into Rogers High School, so they've already been in the building with their masks, met Mr. Vance, Mr. Monahan, and our high school team. And so they have been in the building. What is the plan for students using the restroom in the building? Pell, we will be setting up a schedule for classrooms, and K classrooms have bathrooms. So the little ones are, little ones are okay, they have the bathrooms. At Pell, we are setting up a schedule for classrooms. We're monitoring very carefully when they do use the bathrooms. And of course, we're going to have, you know, everybody can't be on a timer for that. So I'm sure we're going to have Paris and other adults helping escort people to bathrooms. We want as little traffic as possible in the hallways at all times. What is the plan for deep cleaning at Pell? The plan for deep cleaning at Pell, Thompson, and Rogers, Mr. Goncalves and Mr. Young, working with the plant engineers, have been doing yeoman's work. And we've also purchased foggers, which will require them to wear respirators, hazmat, almost like hazmat jumpsuits. They'll be doing deep cleans at night using the foggers, as well as sprayers. They're the latest as far as the technology, as far as killing the germs. So we will have that as, along with custodians, hours are being shifted. So we'll have custodians around the buildings at all times, cleaning high-touch areas. I know, for instance, at Thompson, Mr. Larry's right on it. He has the plan as far as the hours of when the bathrooms will be cleaned, and he's going to be sharing that with the staff. As I'm sure the other plant custo, plant engineers with their custodians will be sharing that. So we'll have scheduled bathroom times, almost like what you see in airports. This bathroom was cleaned at this time during the day. Sports. Sports is the Rhode Island Interscholastic League. They will be the ones deciding about sports. School will be gradual. It'll be a phase-in approach. We want to do it cautiously. We want to do it safely. We, there's big We, there's big changes, as we all know, I can say them, say it. But I think it's not until everyone starts to experience it that it will start to sink in. And a good, for instance, is even sharing with the staff, when I had the all-staff meeting today. Not only do we have to keep our children in stable pods, our adults need to keep in stable pods. We need to make sure we're clearly aware of where are whereabouts and who we're with. So my, for instance, was if you're teaching at Thompson on the first level and one of your best friends or person you usually have lunch with is up on the third level and in a different grade level, different pod or cluster, you're not going to be having that same daily interaction with them anymore. That is a no-no. We're going to be keeping ourselves in our small groups at all times to protect ourselves and our students at all times. So there's a big change, not only for children, but for adults as well. My son is registered for pre-K, will it also be delivered virtually? The answer is students with an IEP in our PK program can opt for a DL program for the year. So we have dedicated teachers for distance learning, even for our PK students. Is distance learning going to be structured with synchronous, asynchronous or both? I hope, I believe I'm going through this explanation. It's going to be a combination of both, but it's going to be particular to the building. It's based upon staffing and student needs. The governor says all children should be in person by October 13. So does this void the December 1st date set for those who chose? No, 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 that chose virtual, no. That was very confusing. I understand the question totally. When, and I, hopefully today, when she was back on today, she was very clear. When she is stating that she's giving the green light for in-person learning and she's expecting all children back for in-person learning, she's speaking to those that chose in-person learning. That was a big yes. I understand the question totally. We fielded some questions, I actually contacted, a lot of us contacted communications and asked if that could be clarified better. I do think it was perfectly, I hope, clarified today. It is only for those that opted for in-person learning. Those who opted for distance learning, you're still in it. And probably near the middle or end of October, we're going to do a check-in with you just for our planning person, purposes and logistics. And we're going to see if you want to continue. Will all exterior doors be required to lock for safety or propped open for ventilation? All right, exterior doors will be closed. All doors have to be closed. I know when we're hearing some of the conversations about the importance of airflow, et cetera. And even when speaking with my leadership team, I said, well, try to keep the door open. We can't keep the outside door open. Interior doors, we are asking about. And then the windows in some of the hallways, especially at Rogers High School, because ventilation is something that school does not have, an HVAC system as does Pell and Thompson. So we're trying to see if we can keep some of the interior doors open if possible. And I will say the fire marshal will be someone that would have to get permission for, from, for that. And the other one is, in, at Rogers, we have interior doors that lead to a quad that is not open to the public. So we're asking about that. But as far as exterior doors that are exposed, lead out to the main roads or out to the general public, no. Rogers. Rogers, hours for Rogers, Mr. Vance will go over this, you'll see it. Will lunch happen? So what's happening? Rogers is a, a grab-and-go-in, meaning breakfast, and a grab-and-go-out. They do not have to go to the cafeteria if they're not having lunch. But we will be making food available when they enter and when they leave. We will not be using the cafeteria for food service. The Wednesday cleaning day, I have had this question asked. The teacher in serv, all right, so, and then it says make the teacher in-service days on Wednesday. I want to make sure the school is 100% clean. I agree with you, we do too. And do you expect NPS to be full in-person at all this year? All right, I'm going to, and there's one more question. If Rhode Island Interscholastic League doesn't approve sports or matches, can we at least have practices, et cetera, to keep kids active? As far as keeping kids active and following any kind of groups, as far as participating in non-Rhode Island Interscholastic League programs, I do believe you can do that now. As far as at the school, we will with our PE classes, see what we will be able to do based upon RIDO and the guidelines. I'm not sure if NPS is going to be full in-person every child all year. Just because if we don't have a vaccine and we, and we know that mask-wearing, social distancing are two key components. I, I don't believe our facilities can afford, can enable us to have all children in and still at the same time, following all the safety RIDO guidelines. Teacher in-service days, we don't control that. We're on a state calendar and the state has made teacher in-service days on Monday. So that goes back to the beginning of these questions. Why take, why did we have Wednesday, not the cleaning day? We took it off the table because Mondays were holidays. They were teacher in-service days. And those that had the Monday, Tuesday aid days, they weren't missing much more, but they were missing a couple, a more instructional day than those that were on the B schedule for Thursday for us. So it was a combination of things. That was one of them, on the professional development days for teachers. We know now, because of the equipment we bought, we know with the fogger and the, the sprayer and the cleaning practices we have, we know we can keep this school clean. And we know we can, just continuing to follow those checklists, we will be able to carry all that out in the time allotted. And the hours for Rogers, they're going to start at 7:30 and we're hoping to have all the children out of the building by 12:30. That will hopefully enable us to start dismissals at Thompson around 1:30, 1:45. And then we'll see with the bus transportation, how soon we can start the Pell dismissals. Now, for those of you that are hearing that and saying, well, I'm used to this time for my child's getting out. If your children go to after-school programs, I've been working with the community partners, meaning Boys and Girls Club, FabLab, Martin Luther King Center, Newport Community School. Let's see, Cozy, our after-school programs with Christina Ruth at Pell. I've been, the YMCA. I've been, as I met with them this afternoon, and I've shared with them the rough draft of what the schedules will look like. The Newport Recreation Department, I want to thank them. They're offering, for children who are on DL, they're going to offer safe places and adult monitors to help students with DL. But these agencies in our community are really coming together to help us. And we're all, they're there for us. So I will, they're keeping informed so that if we do have earlier dismissal times, maybe you have children at Thompson or Pell that go to after-school programs, they're getting their staffing together to help provide and assist us with safe places. Kindergarten drop-off protocol, kindergarten bathroom rooms and protocol. Pell is currently just developing these schedules and protocols. And you will be getting these from your Pell leadership team. Full in-person? We should have all our children that opted for full in-person, they should be. We're hoping first week, October, we'll have everybody on a regular schedule. And when you see the calendar, I think that will be more clear. The reentry, just to know the reentry, hoping kids will be eased in. Yes, we are easing children in. Now, this is interesting. With shorter days, it is a big adjustment, I agree. So we are in general trying to make the days a little shorter for children. I hear you about, it is a big adjustment, especially if they're going the whole summer and they're not wearing masks. But we'll work through that. But we will, and please know, our teachers, our staff, all of us, we want to be in school, we want to be teaching our children. And we will help, we will help them make that adjustment. The NACTAC classes, how will those work? Those are going to work the same as all the other classes. There'll be, and I'm going to let Mr. Young and Carrie Clark answer those questions for you directly. But they will be setting up the schedule just aligned with Rogers and your students will have the same opportunities as all the others. Necessary medical documentation that may be needed. For instance, if my child has a sniffle, a runny nose, dry cough, can they be cleared by a doctor and still go to school? Would a COVID test be required? If you, you as a parent identify a symptom and you consult the doctor and the doctor then clears them. And if the child is sent home from school with a probable case, then testing will be required due to the possible contamination of other students and employees. So you do need to consult your doctor on all that and then you would need to contact us. Busing. What will busing be like for children? Busing is going to be, as I mentioned earlier, you will receive very different. We will not have, we will not have a bus schedule in the paper. You will be receiving individually a notification about what bus your child will be on and what seat number. So that's a big difference. And I have to say, I'm a little fearful about people that didn't sign up for transportation because we're setting those bus routes and those buses with stable pods to keep children safe. So that's what's going to be, that's going to be very different for you as far as parents finding out what bus your child takes and your child's actually going to have a seat assigned. Yes, you can always, thank you for the question. So the question is, what is the plan for distance learning? Can I sign my children up for the first 60 days? And the answer is absolutely. You can at any time, this is why I recommend it to parents, if you are uncertain, say you're going to go in-person, because you can, we can always switch you into distance learning. But the other way around doesn't work because we are setting up classrooms for stable pods and for social distancing of six feet. And we can't be adding more desks into classrooms. So please be aware of that, you can do that. There's a Thompson question, will higher grades be hybrid at first or in-person? Will there be a phasing in for all students and in what timeframe? Seven, eight will be on the A B schedule. Seven, eight is following the high school model. They will be phased in, just as all the other students will be phased in slowly. Sanitation procedures, process for presumptive case. Parents who opted for DL till January, busing and cleaning procedures on buses. There are cleaning procedures daily before the bus comes out. It will be fogged, cleaned overnight. Then, as, as they, as it actually goes out during the day, in between tiers. We have three tiers. We do a Rogers bus run, we deliver all the Rogers students. Then after that happens, the bus is to pull over and clean the bus, wipe down the bus, everything else. Then we go and we pick up the Thompson students. Then the bus has to pull over, does the same procedure. All of Mr., all of Ocean State Bus, Mr. Mergos people have been trained and they will all follow the appropriate procedures using the appropriate cleaning products. And then after they do Thompson, Pell will be picked up. And then the buses may go on to other runs or other duties for some of our special groups and they will be cleaned then. If you opted for DL, the question is, if I opted for DL and then I want to come back, will I be able to get busing? The answer is yes, you will. It's, it is full-time. School is full-time, but it's not, and I see, or half-day. It's not half-day. What we did at Rogers was, as you may or may not know, that lunch period takes up a long, big chunk of time during the day. We eliminated cafeteria time completely and we followed what most, a lot of other high schools in the state did. And we put it on like a double-session day for classes. Classes, I believe, are 62, 63 minutes per class, but Mr. Vance will be able to answer that better at your session. When can a child return after failing a symptom screening? The 7/20 update from RIDO says at least 10 days since symptoms first appeared and at least 24 hours have passed since your last fever. So without using, and you can't use any aspirin, Tylenol or any of that. And then I have a question about what time will my students, students that come from Middletown to go into NACTAC, what time does that bus leave? I do not have that time. But I will make sure Mr. Young or Ms. Clark will post that so that all our students coming from different districts know their bus times. So, I don't know if I put everyone to sleep answering all those questions. Or I just want you to know, I've been toggling back and forth, so I haven't really seen everyone on the screen. I do see in the chat, there's been a lot going on. I'm going to scan through this very quickly just to see. Thank you very much, Kathy, September 3rd. Tomorrow, school meetings, Thompson's going to be at four, Pell's at five and Rogers is going to be at six. Okay, thank you, Katie, I hope we resolved that Google link. Thank you, Carrie, for posting it. The links. Okay, so Pell, someone's looking for the links and for the Pell meeting. Thank you, Mrs. Neary. Children, Ms. Tealy, children with special needs and masks, that will be according to IEP. And we will do whatever is needed for those children. I will say now, there's an excellent recording and I will have this posted and have it sent out. I did send it out to my school committee and I believe I sent it out to my principals. Dr. Bromage, B R O M M A G E, who's also a professor in Massachusetts and has his own class, is, I believe, a facilities engineer. And he has been sharing the different mitigation processes we can use in our buildings to make them safe and to make everyone feel safe. And I will put that on our website for all of you to see so that you can hear that recording. It was a Saturday morning meeting the superintendent's had just this past weekend. And I have to say, I really heard a lot. It really reassure some of the, what we're doing here in Newport. And it actually was very reassuring that we are going in all the right directions as far as ventilation, how we're setting up our building, et cetera. Thank you, Mr. Monahan. High school schedules will be published by 10:00 AM tomorrow. Counselors are, will continue to work on missing classes, they're published in Aspen. Phase-in starts for pre-K through four. What were the dates in grades? We will have that posted, but we're going to be starting on September 14th. Pre-K and K will have a soft start during that week of September 14th. Grade one and three, if my memory is serving me correctly, will be the first ones to go in, phasing in slowly. And then two and four. And the reason for this, Pell parents, I think you may be aware that the building has two different wings and Principal Westman and her team are trying to limit the number of people as we gently start to come back. as we gently start to come back. How will you, with the students being moving or teachers not at all are in the same class? How you rode the high school, the students being moving, teachers not all? So the high school situation. The high school situation, I will agree, does not lend itself to stable pods. And the RIDO guidance and the guidance we're getting from RIDE states that for the high school and the way we're doing it, that is okay. I will say, Principal Vance, right away, immediately said we couldn't have all kids in. And he also looked at the importance of having A through M. So we had smaller numbers of students in the building. And we did the most important things, which we're finding, if you do this and follow the rules, wear your mask, wash your hands, and maintain that social distancing of six feet apart, you're, you're really doing a lot as far as mitigation. Mask breaks. So the question about mask breaks. So mask breaks are something, in the beginning, before new guidance came out this past week, we thought it was something we could possibly do, you know, maybe have the children go out in the hallway or do something, no. We have set up a system where we either go outside or our teams are going to look at what is the safest way to do this. There's been a lot of discussion about this. It's not something we can do in the classroom. So we're still trying to come up with a safe plan other than we have them all outside or the class, or we bring the small group. And we will and we are encouraging our teachers to bring students outside as much as possible, whenever possible. And then allow the children to be physically far apart in order to do their masks, you know, get a break from those masks. And I'll say, yesterday, we were visited by the EDOC team. That's the new team, the Education Operations Center people, who went through our buildings and did tours. We started at 8:15 in the morning and we went straight through. And we finished up about 3:15, 3:20. The reports are, our build, our custodians, plant engineers have done a fantastic job. We actually had Eagle Ventilation, who does all our systems in our buildings and checks our filters. And he was actually there to talk and give the, I'll call it more the detailed data about MERV filters and et cetera with the representative from the National Guard and from RIDO. So he was able to give them a lot of information, and they're very pleased with that. At Pell, we have MERV 8s. And at Thompson, we have MERV 11. And believe me, as I look at all of you out there, I never in my entire life thought I'd be talking to parents about MERV filters, but here I am. So MERV 13 is what we're, everyone's, that's like the gold standard. So we are trying to get, like everyone else in the state and all over, the MERV 13s. Our Eagle Ventilation, our vendor, he's trying as well. But they were very pleased with the mitigation procedures we had in all the buildings. They actually, they loved the campus over at Rogers. They understood the building needs a lot of work. But they love the campus and the amount of outdoors we have there. The other thing about Rogers is because the building is so old, it has no HVAC system for them to look at. This is an older building that the windows, we have to rely on the windows opening, having fresh air, and fans. So we are working on that and we're, we're in good shape. We got the equipment, we just need to do a few tweaks. And because of that, we had our teachers, they're going to do remote PD for today and yes, and tomorrow. And that's just because everything's going to be safety first. And we want to make sure, based on their recommendations, we have some of the items they wanted in place for us. You mentioned software being purchased for DL. We were looking at different platforms for DL. And we do have some platforms available. Those, we will be putting those out through the schools, through their curriculums. And just through, it's, every school doesn't necessarily have the same platform. Amy C., high school students will be moving. I joined the meeting, I wanted to know full in-person reopening for, starting the week of September 14th, we're going to start bringing children in. So the hybrid model for Pell, Ms. Bowley, Ms. Principal Westman will be sharing that. We do have a rough draft and there will be, this webinar will be posted. And yes, that information is in there. I noticed Director Andrade is answering questions, thank you very much. Thank you, Jen Hall. We'll have the reentry plan. How many days a week will the high school students go to school? They'll be going two days in-person and three days distance learning. Amy C., Kaminti, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce your last name. And I do know for some of our students that need extra services, we are trying to bring them in more days than that. Thank you. All right, we started using the foggers today. Oh, good, Mr. Young. We have the foggers. We're doing test runs with all our equipment to make sure they work and to do the training for our staff. Elementary students, they'll be going to school if they're in-person, five days a week. Detail plan will be posted. Okay, Meg Katsumi, she needs the link for the Pell meeting tomorrow night. Thank you, Director Andrade, for answering questions. Okay, so Ms. Bowley, I do want to answer this one. Yes, the plan is we will be back into fully in-person for those that chose in-person. If you chose DL, your child can stay in distance learning. It's only, the plan is everyone that opted for in-person will be back in, fully in-person by October at the latest. Platform parents can commute. I don't know about the platform for parents to communicate with one another. I can look into that for you, though. We will be keeping this one. I'm going to ask Ms. Nash if she could put that one down so parents have a place to communicate. I also want to share with parents that we are working with our Help Desk Provider Custom. Help Desk is in English and Spanish for any technology needs. But we're also adding a component about software. How to use a Chromebook and then how to use software. So we're in the middle of working those details out. So it was suggested by RYPIN, which is a parent information network advocacy. I was on a call with them. And when we were trying to find out things that would help families, they suggested having a Help Desk, a Q and A, a person that can talk to parents and walk them through software, how to use the Chromebook, et cetera. And for our Spanish-speaking families, which I will be having a Spanish, another Spanish town hall meeting next week, we will have everything in Spanish for you as well and continue to have Spanish-speaking people on the line. Okay, Candace, thank you for asking and answering. Okay, Ayla, I think I answered the October in-person. Okay, oh, thank you. So Kristin is mentioning there is another after-school program, CYP Navy Program. So yes, I am, Kristin. If you could reach out to Kathy Nash, so you're on our list. So I do want to be able to have a resources, a list of resources for parents that are looking for other after-school programs, that would be wonderful. And again, if you're in DL, some of our parents are offering distance learning. And if you need a place, a supervised place, some of our partners are offering that service for you as well. Okay, can I restate in-person to distance larceny versus DL to in-person? Okay, distance learning is when someone has said, I want to continue and keep my child at grade level and participating in school in Newport School System. But at this point in time, I don't want my child going into school. So I would like, I'm making this up, I'd like my sixth-grade student to be in distance learning. So we have your child's name, we assign them to a teacher, they go through the sixth-grade curriculum. They don't come into school, they do all their lessons and learning online, and they communicate online with their classroom teachers. Excuse me, I turn on the lights, it's getting dark in here. Oops, wrong one, there we go. Whoops, wrong one again, sorry. All right, Jamie, I know, I can see you laughing at me over there. Okay, so, okay, so there has been a lot of new information, yes. I understand why. But how do we go about choosing in-person prior to 2021? There will be a survey going out in October. And we will be offering, you know, if you'd like to come back, would love for you to come back. We just need to know, you know, with enough time for us to set up the correct logistics. So there will be something going out for anyone that's in distance learning. Candace, thank you again, Director Andrade, for answering questions. Okay, the DL schedules for each, for each school, and for some cases, like for instance, at Pell, for screen time, that, those details, I believe the principals will have for you in their PowerPoint presentations and will also post them. So you'll be able to see when your child is in DL, what your child will be doing. Ken, thank you. Okay, thank you, Jennifer G., thank you for everything you do too. I know you're very busy. It's okay, thank you. Let's see, thank you, Director Andrade, for answering. Okay, you're very welcome. I think communication is very important. So please, if we need to do more, let us know. We're trying to make ourselves available to you at all time. Okay, thank you, Melissa, I appreciate it. Rogers, oh, there it is, there's Rogers, September 3rd, 6:00 PM. Okay, and there's the meeting link, thank you, Carrie, for putting that in there. And the communications, that's right. Okay, Ms. Dawson, Christina, we were trying to have that done by today, but we're still looking at logistics because we, of course, we want to have as many children in-person as often as possible, meaning in fifth and sixth grade, we know that's critical for many reasons. But they're also still young. Christina, we're trying to, we will have that for you no later than Friday. We're still looking at the numbers, we're checking out things. And if you missed, we also have community partners that I'm trying to have them help us out, especially for working families that may need a little assistance if we have to go to an A-B schedule for grades five and six. Oh, Mr. Young, he knows everything there is to know about MERV. Okay, Minimum Efficiency Reporting Value, that's what MERV stands for. All right, thank you for sharing that, and that's important. Okay, Barbara, good, good question. All right, Barbara's sharing with us, asking the question about when children need to take drinks of water and what about the masks? So if you listen to the Dr. Bromage, and if you listen to the recommendation, it's, he did not, he teaches himself. But you are allowed to remove the mask, drink the water, but you have to put the mask right back down. And that's the same thing with breakfast in the classroom. The difficult part, and I know, and I keep saying, this is going to be very different for children, for all of us, for teachers, is natural tendency is when you take off the mask, you take a drink of water, you want to talk. We have to put it back on. That's going to be the natural tendency. And the other thing is when they're eating their breakfast, they're going to want to talk. And yes, you did see my hands go like this. That's the teacher in me. So we are going to have to ask them to be quiet. And that's going to be really hard, I know it is. The Pell meeting link has been posted, and we'll make sure we have that up, Ms. Turski. I do not know the answer to when, I did, that's something I haven't focused on. When will students be expected to log in? I think it's going to be at each class time. But again, we'll find that out for you for Thompson Middle School, when DL students are supposed to check in. Thank you, Kathy, she's noting parent resources and community partners, she'll post those. Okay, thank you, Mr. Gomes. For my attention, laughing at them too. Okay, thank, thank you, Jamie. You need a little humor here and there. Yes, thank you, Dr. Flowers, I agree, to all the Newport personnel. There's a lot of unsung heroes. Everyone is working very hard to make sure we come back safely and we provide the best educational opportunities for you and your children. So I'm not seeing, I answered all the questions that came in ahead of time. I answered, I believe I got to everything in the chat room. I want to thank Director Andrade, Mr. Young, Ms. Clark, Ms. Westman for jumping in, all the help I've been having on this. Yes, Ms. Hall, I do agree, you have to keep your sense of humor at all times. And thank you, Ms. Neary. We will keep you informed of the daily changes. And I do recommend, if and when possible, if you can watch the governor's announcements, that's a big plus. We will keep you informed. I will be back on next week. I haven't selected a date yet because I want to try to have the best information for you as possible. I will not come on any later than Thursday, though. I don't want to come on on a Friday night for all of you. So I will not, sometime before next Thursday, I will be on, I will not be on on the holiday. So you can all enjoy your Labor Day weekend. Again, thank you for everything, thank you for your questions. I know this is going to be a big change for all of us. I do ask that everyone just please be patient with each other, be patient with yourselves. Remember, we're going to all have to be flexible. And we will keep you as best informed as possible. And I want to thank the Newport Public School teachers and staff for all they're doing. This is a big change for them too. They're getting in earlier before your students. But I know it's a big adjustment going into the classes, going into the schools. And just the way we have to keep our masks on socially distanced. And remember to always wash our hands. So have a good night, everyone. I'll be back, I'll be back soon. Take care and stay safe. Bye-bye.